Meeting to order, if good please. Very pleased and appreciative of having Reverend Bobby Alger, Crossroads Community Church, with us this evening to deliver our invocation. Thank you, sir.
Glad be with you. Will you stand with me? Gracious God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and Lord, I'm reminded, your word says that we are to live a life worthy of our calling. And God, each one of these men and women on this board have a calling before you have been elected into this position, and I bless their calling that they have before you, Lord. We, as the citizens, have a calling before you as we work together. Lord, we have many opportunities before us, and I pray that you would continue to grant wisdom and revelation and understanding as we work together in this county to make the best decisions possible that would honor you and bless one another, in Christ's name. Amen.
Vice Chairman Lofton, your lead is in the pledge, please, sir.
Would you remain standing, place your flag? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, adoption of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
We have none, Mr. Chairman. I would just point out that there is a resolution that was placed at your seat associated with Agenda Item 8.
8D. Thank you, sir. All right, how would the board like to handle the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I'd like to pull the Public Works Committee report off of the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda for an update on the recycling program.
So, in the form of a motion?
It is a motion.
So, the motion is to adopt the agendas presented, having pulled 6D, the Public Works Report, off. Did you want to add one back on, or no?
Yes.
Where will we put it?
Wherever it's most convenient for you, Mr. Chairman. We can do it at the end of the consent agenda.
I was actually asking admin. At the before-board comments?
We could add it under Item 9, which is Committee Business. Be, make it 9B, maybe?
9B?
That makes sense.
Okay. All right, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, no? The agenda is adopted as amended. Public Works Committee Report moved to 9B. That will bring us to citizen comments, agenda items not the subject of a public hearing. Anyone sign up and start?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Joy Kirk.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Joy Kirk, and I am a resident of the Back Creek District. I am also a former Frederick County Public School employee. I began my career 24 years ago at Robert E. Ailer Middle School, at the time, a very overcrowded place to work. I then left Ailer and went to Armel, an even more overcrowded place to work, teach, and learn. Ailer was crowded waiting for Admiral Byrd to open. Armel was crowded waiting for Evendale to open. I left Frederick County Public Schools, working at Admiral Byrd, again, an overcrowded public school. Overcrowded conditions are not ideal places for student learning or for student success. We are very fortunate, our teachers in Frederick County Public Schools work very hard and diligently to make sure that even when they are not teaching in ideal conditions, their students are meeting with success. It is through the dedication and perseverance of the educators in our school division that we have the incredible success rate that we have. I can only imagine where our students would be if we provided the ideal instructional opportunities and spaces for them to learn. I realize this board wants to be judiciary responsible. I get it. It's wonderful to plan for the future, but right now, we're still trying to catch up with the past. So, I would encourage you to do this addition of the $3.2 million to Ailer and allow it to open at a larger capacity, thus relieving Admiral Byrd of some of its overcrowding conditions and allowing for optimal learning conditions and teaching experiences for the maximum number of students. It's wonderful to try to plan ahead once you're caught up. So, for now, I please consider the $3.2 million, allowing it to be a bigger school, alleviating some of the stresses that we currently feel as a school division, and then let's start looking at how we can plan ahead for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy Smith?
Jimmy Smith? Welcome.
This was tall enough for me or not. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jimmy Smith. I live in the Back Creek District, and I'm currently a candidate for the school board in the Back Creek District. I'm here tonight to offer my support in addition funding for the new Ailer School. As a citizen and possible school board member, I want to be proactive and not reactive. I want to be fiscally conservative with our tax dollars. After several meetings with school officials, I feel that it has legitimate need for this additional educational space. By being proactive now, we can construct the needed space at much lower cost than we can if we wait to do so in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Brandy Hammond?
Sam?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Brandy Hammond, a resident of the Shawnee District, and I'm here to ask your support for the additional funding for Ailer. It's definitely much needed. I have a daughter at Byrd Middle School right now, which is extremely overcrowded, as we know, so Ailer is needed for the current Ailer students who've suffered in the poor-conditioned schools, we all know, and also to relieve the overcrowding at Byrd. With the current amount of funding, Ailer, the new Ailer would open at 95% capacity, which wouldn't allow much room for growth at all. I think just around 30 to 35 students would put it at capacity, which will quickly happen in the county. So, it's not really a question of if, but when we'll need that space, and we need it now. So, please, you know, save the county and the taxpayers money by building an adequate school for the students we'll need now, because as you know, each year that we delay, or, sorry, a little nervous, if we decide to add on later, the funds will be just astronomical at that point. So, we know it's, we need it, so please do that now instead of later to save that money. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that'll bring us to the consent agenda, which I think we dealt with.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve of the consent agenda with the modification made earlier.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, no? Consent agenda is adopted as amended earlier. All right. Board of Supervisors, comments, are there any? One? All right, none, we'll move on. County officials. Vice Chairman Lofton, would you give me a hand, please? Dr. Lambert, would you like to join us up front, please, sir? Sheriff, would you like to join us as well? Please do. Congratulations, well done, sir.
Thank you.
Good to see you, sir. Employee of Month Award is adopted by the board in '92, and whereas Greg E. Lambert, who serves as a deputy with the Frederick County Sheriff's Office, was nominated for Employee of the Month, and whereas in March of 2016, Deputy Greg E. Lambert was assigned as a surveillance officer for the Northwestern Region Adult Drug Court, where he is known to be tough but compassionate with drug court participants, offering counsel as well as constructive criticism when appropriate. And whereas Deputy Lambert brings meaningful insights regarding the commitment of individuals in their recovery, has an intense working knowledge of the people he is charged with supervising, and provides the drug court team with valuable awareness about the personality and the psyche of drug court participants under his supervision. And whereas Deputy Lambert is tireless in his efforts to assist recovering addicts, and on more than one occasion has purchased shoes, toiletries, or other essentials for program participants who lack the financial means to purchase those items. And whereas Deputy Lambert was commended by an officer of the court for going above and beyond the call of duty, working long hours, and never shirking his responsibilities, and his proactive approach, compassion, and leadership have helped make the Northwest Region Adult Drug Court program successful. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors this 10th day of July 2019, that Greg E. Lambert is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for June 2019, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends gratitude to Greg E. Lambert for his outstanding performance and dedicated service, and wishes him continued success in future endeavors. And it finally resolved that Greg E. Lambert is hereby entitled to all the rights and privileges associated with this award. Please join me in thanking and congratulating Deputy Lambert on a job well done.
Yes, it is. Makes you feel good, doesn't it?
Committee appointments, Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I am almost ready, and I will be ready next month.
Excellent, thanks, sir. Project Winchester Service Authority, our existing representative, Ned Cleland, is eligible and has agreed to serve in another term. How would the board like to handle that?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reappoint Mrs. Cleveland if they would do that. So, my motion would be for reappointment.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, no? Dr. Cleland is reappointed to the Frederick Winchester Service Authority. So, Frederick Warren County Line Property Issue?
I think, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tibbs?
Yes, sir. This is an issue that the board, was presented to the board last month, and it was asked to be postponed so all the board members could be present to hear it, so we have brought it back to the board again tonight. This is an issue that came up through the Department of Elections relative to an issue with the Frederick Warren County boundary in the Foster-Hala Road area. We discovered that there were several parcels that were physically located within Frederick County but were identified through deeds as being in Warren County. So, to the screen to your left, you'll see the existing Warren-Frederick County line that runs from Route 11 Valley Pike to the east of Route 340, and it is a straight line. The area in dispute, as we said, was located along Foster-Hala Road. Think I've hit the wrong button here. Technical difficulties. But just maybe I'm wrong. So, this is the area in dispute. It's approximately nine parcels that are all identified as being located within Warren County. The lone parcel here is identified as being located in Frederick County. We were contacted by the Warren County Administrator regarding this boundary issue. This map shows the GIS data from Warren County that shows the parcel has been subdivided. Those subdivisions were approved by Warren County, and then they asked us to compare it to Frederick County's GIS data. This is the data that Frederick County GIS Department has that shows that it is just one large parent tract. Again, this is our Frederick County GIS data in the large white area, which physically is located in Frederick County, but there is no parcel data. Again, it's because those parcels through deeds were identified in Warren County, and we never picked that information up. So, as stated previously, this issue arose due to concerns from the State Board of Elections to ensure that voters were in the correct voting districts. Frederick County, in cooperation with Warren County, contracted with Martian Leg Land Surveyors to complete a survey of the county line. What we found out through the survey is the line was the straight line, and that Mr. Scott Marsh with Martian Leg, they had surveyed within accuracy to about a centimeter of the county line. But as stated previously, we did find that parcels through deed research were deeded in Warren County, were actually physically located in Frederick County. This is a copy of the survey that Mr. Marsh did. And again, as stated previously, this was established as the existing county line, and again, this is the area that is in question as being identified in Warren County. How did this come to be? You know, there were a number of deeds, some were completed in 1987, but they were designated the parcels as North River Magisterial District in Warren County, despite a majority of the parcel being located in Frederick County. There were also lack of boundary notations on some of the earlier plats and surveys for those parcels. This is a 1948 deed for a parcel that was located in Frederick County, but it's designated in the Cedarville District of Warren County, which is now the North River District. However, this deed, out of all the deeds that we saw in our research, indicates that a portion may be located in Frederick County, but there's no, there was no definitive mention of Frederick County in any of the other deeds, they were all identified as Warren County. On February 28, Supervisor Wells and I attended a meeting with County Administrator Doug Stanley at Warren County and Warren County Supervisor Dan Murray to meet with the residents in the affected area. Through that meeting and hearing back from the residents, a lot of those folks, they had been in Warren County for a number of years, had identified themselves with Warren County and as Warren County citizens, so there was some reluctance or hesitancy to, and some emotion about being moved into a new county. So, Scott Marsh, during the course of those discussions with the residents, proposed a possible boundary adjustment, which follows the red line. It would follow the straight line of the parent tract. This one particular parcel here that is located in Frederick County, that property owner was at the meeting, and they were agreeable to being moved into Warren County. They said if that would solve the issue, make the line cleaner for everyone involved, they were more than willing to be relocated to Warren County. So, this is a sample of a proposed boundary line adjustment as prepared by Martian Leg. So, tonight, what staff is seeking from the board is some direction. There are two possibilities. One is the board could affirm the line as being the line that is surveyed. If there is interest by this board in entertaining a boundary line adjustment, then the other action would be to authorize staff to advertise a public hearing on a possible boundary line adjustment. Warren County would do the same thing, they would have a public hearing on their end as well. At the conclusion of that public hearing, if the board was agreeable to moving the boundary line, both boards would adopt a joint resolution, and they would, we would petition the Circuit Court, and then the court would enter an order moving, adjusting the boundary line. Since the June 12 meeting, staff gathered some additional information that might assist the board in your deliberations. We did contact Warren County, and they advised that there are currently no schoolchildren registered in Warren County Public Schools from the parcels that are physically located in Frederick County but have been identified and taxed in Warren. I would note that there is at least one child in the one parcel that is identified in Frederick County, but they had expressed a willingness to move to Warren County, so there would be one child affected, but the parent was agreeable to that move, because I believe that they had originally come from Warren County, so it wouldn't be a new move for them. Warren County Fire and Rescue currently serves the 300 to 700 block of Foster-Hala Road. However, the 100 to 200 block of Foster-Hala Road, which is the area in question, is currently served by Company 11 in Stevens City. Through our dispatch records, there have been 22 calls for service through law enforcement and EMS to the 100 to 200 block from January 2017 through June 8, 2019, and there was one instance where Warren County did assist on an EMS call in that area. Warren County has also advised us that it currently receives approximately $9,800 in revenue from real estate and personal property taxes in that area. Trying to do some rough math, that's, would be slightly higher if those parcels were to move into Frederick County, we would recognize about $10,000 in revenue from those parcels. And with the one parcel that is currently located in Frederick County, if that parcel were to be moved as part of a boundary line adjustment, it's approximately $1,000 in real estate revenue that the county would be losing or would go to Warren County. So, with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions the board might have, and also point out that Mr. Doug Stanley, County Administrator for Warren County, is here and would be glad to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Tibbs? Any questions of Mr. Stanley? We certainly appreciate you being with us this evening, sir, the cooperation and the working together. All right, how would the board like to handle this one?
Chairman, this is in the Opeckin District.
It is.
And I am in favor of the boundary adjustment as presented by Martian Leg. Correct me, in making a motion, the motion would be to move this to public hearing?
To forward it to public hearing, yes, sir.
To follow it. I would move that this boundary adjustment item be moved to public hearing.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
A second, is there any discussion? One?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
May, as Mr. Tibbs noted, there is minimal, if any, impact to the people that are currently taxed in Warren County by the boundary line adjustment that they have made, and so I will not vote for the boundary line adjustment because of the minimal impact. I think that to change it now, I don't see there's any good reason to do that, because as you can see, EMS and law enforcement have been serving that area for some time, and actually, those people would get a reduction in the taxes that they pay.
All right, sir, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Dunn?
For reasons similar to what Mr. Lofton had to say, I'm not inclined to go and change the thing, because a previous mistake has been rectified by the surveying, so I'd say leave the county the way it is. For that reason, I'd probably not be in favor of going forward to a public hearing.
And I feel similarly in that, you know, it's been established for a couple hundred years already, and I have concern about those folks who will be directly impacted now, but that line will be there for many, many years yet, we hope.
Mr. Chairman, and one other comment, for people either in Frederick County or in Warren County that would be affected adversely, like if there were a school child that moved in, you know, next month, I think we can make those adjustments to be fair to those children.
Further discussion, anyone? The motion is to forward to public hearing to consider the adjustment. Are we ready? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes no, the motion carries, we'll forward to public hearing. Thank you. That will bring us to a resolution approving issuance of debt by the Winchester Regional Airport Authority.
Mr. Chairman, Nick Sabo, Executive Director of the airport, is here to address this.
Welcome, sir, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman DeHaven, Board of Supervisors, County Administrator. I am Nick Sabo, Executive Director of the Winchester Regional Airport Authority. We are before you tonight requesting approval of a resolution for issuance of debt to the authority. This is in accordance with our enabling legislation that says any debt in excess of a half a million dollars must be approved by all of the supporting localities on the authority. The debt would support a project to acquire a land lease and the associated improvements on them that consist of two hangar facilities, totaling approximately 27,000 square feet, as well as about 4,100 square feet of office space. These represent the only facilities on the airport that are capable of storing the largest business class aircraft that we receive on a routine basis, and we believe that this supports our business and strategic aims to not only provide the aviation services and infrastructure that the region needs and commands, but also works to help us generate additional revenues to offset the operating subsidy that we currently receive from the county and the city.
Questions, anyone? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sabo, thank you for coming in. To the rest of the board members, Mr. Sabo and I have talked about this, and the one thing that I wanted, he has presented a business plan which shows a profitability, a potential in the future, and what I've asked is, and Mr. Sabo, if you, again, if you affirm this, that each year, the board would get an audit or a report of the expenses and revenue associated with this particular building, if approved.
Absolutely, yes, and it's in our accounting software now for all of our assets, we are able to track pretty easily all the expenses, including utilities and other things, maintenance costs for each facility, as well as the revenues generated from them, and be happy to provide that on an annual basis or as requested.
Thank you.
Other questions, anyone? Thank you very much, sir. How would the board like to handle this request? Request is adoption of the resolution authorizing the debt.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
I would authorize, I would make a motion to authorize the debt as presented.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. That will bring us to a request for the school board seeking a supplemental appropriation for a replacement Ailer.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is a request from the school board for additional funding to allow them to construct additional classroom space on the Ailer replacement school that is scheduled to begin construction. I know the superintendent is here, as well as others, that may wish to address the matter if the board has questions.
Any questions of Mr. Tierney, anyone? Any questions of Supervisor Sovine? Anyone? All right, seeing none, how would the board like to handle this request?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, for approval of the request for the $3,200,000 as presented.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
A second, discussion? Is there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
If we may, on the face, when I attended the school board meeting where they presented the latest information on the school, on its face, it seemed like a good idea. However, I came away with questions that have not been answered yet. It seems to me that some things just don't comport here. The Gainesboro Middle School was built several years ago, I think it cost about $52, $53 million, 900 students. Initially, this school was designed, as I understand it, totaled approximately 700 students for a cost equating to the 45 million that we said we would allocate, and now we expect to add another 300 students to the school, bringing the population to over 1,000, and we're going to offer $3.2 million more, which sounds like a good idea, but again, even at the, over 1,000 students, that still exceeds the Department of Education's recommended standards. So, there appears to be some, as So there appears to be some, as the architects representatives said in that meeting, we have an economy of scale here. I'm thinking that there probably is some more economy of scale, an economy that we can be realized if the board of supervisors could sit down with the school board and administration to go over more detail exactly the 300 that we're adding and how we can get a school for over 1,000 students now for about $48 million when it cost us $52 million to $53 million for a 900 student school a couple of years ago. So that's my thoughts. I can't approve this right now, or I won't vote for it right now. I still would like to have a conversation with the school board and the school administration to see if there's any other economies that can be realized in the school, since it appears that this does above and goes above and beyond what schools have been built for before. And I keep hearing that costs are escalating, but if that's the fact, why are we getting a school with a higher population than we did several years ago for less money? So I would like to have a conversation. I can't vote for this right now.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn?
This has been a, this has been an interesting proposition. The public comments that were made, is this mic on? The public comments that were made at the presentation a couple of weeks ago were ones that I was not able to attend simply because I was out of town, and I haven't learned to be in two places at the same time. I understand that the school administration had conversations with four of the six supervisors that were in town. I understand that Ms. Trout was out of the country, but the remaining four had conversations, and they must have thought that my vote was guaranteed yes vote not to have the conversation, you know, with me. Here's my concerns on this issue. In April or in May, we appropriated, we authorized $45.5 million for a 900-person school for the 140,000 square feet. If the school administration has simply gone out and gone to the private sector and said, "We're looking for an architect to see if we can build that," and if they had done that and then had come back and said, "We have $45.5 million. Can we build a school for 900?" And if the answer had been, "Yes, but you have no gym," or "Yes, but you have no cafeteria," and they come back to the board and said, "You know what? We can build a school for 900 students that you want, Mr. Dunn, but do you want a school without a cafeteria? Do you want a school without CTE? Do you want a school without a gym?" I would have said, "Let's work together to try to go and see if we can do that and see what the additional cost is to have that conversation." But from what I understand, again, from what I understand, that did not occur. And instead, they went to the architect and basically, it's a timeout. Instead, they came back in September and Ms. Trout made a request for $53 million, an additional $7.5 million, which brought the total to 53. That motion failed. And then in the fall, the school administration went to an architect and began the discussions for a new school. I'm going to support this because I think it's good for the county. I'm going to support this because I think on a square foot basis, it's a lower cost per unit. But I'd like to say to us as a board and to those from the school administration in attendance here, that going forward, if we can go and work together on this, it would be helpful. And here's the working together part of it. In September, the board voted down an additional $7.5 million for additional costs, yet today, for an additional $3.2 million, we are achieving what we all wanted to achieve. And so for future schools, if it's possible to go and say to the school administration, "Find out what the cost is and see what we can do to work together on that," that'd be helpful. From what I understand, this $3.2 million is a hard number, meaning if the costs are over that number, it is absorbed by the construction people, not by the county. That's a positive to the county. So I'll support this, Mr. Chairman, but I'd say to those in the school board, if we can work together, it would be benefit to everybody. This vote here today, if it passes, will save us about $4 million from the vote that we took back in September. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Supervisor Dunn, I reiterate some of your concern about the way the process works and how we go about allocating the funds, but for me, this really boils all down to the numbers at this point. And I'll just go through some of those that informed my decision on this vote tonight. Just about a year ago, the school board proposed $53 million for a 900-plus student school, which would have been approximately 171 square feet per student. This board of supervisors appropriated, or appropriated 4.5, requesting that the school board build a 140,000-square-foot school or not to exceed 140,000 square feet that housed 900 students for a cost of $45.5 million. What that breaks down to is construction cost per square foot of $288.26, or approximately $50,555 per student for that 900-student school. That would have given approximately 155 square feet per child. That's what we requested at the time that we made the appropriation last year. About a month later, the school board came back and said that they couldn't build a school for 900 students for the $45.5 million and asked for an additional $7.5 million to get us up to that 900-student capacity. This board of supervisors denied that request. A year later now, we're given hard numbers and a request for $3.2 million, which is less than half of last year's additional request to build a school that will house up to 10,049 students according to the Department of Education standards, which is approximately 17% higher capacity than the original 900-student school that we requested. So that breaks down to construction cost per square foot of $281.02, which is less than the $288.26 it would have cost us to build the school we requested. It comes down to $48,700 per student versus $50,555 per student, and it breaks down the square foot per child to 140 square feet per child, which to my recollection is exactly where we kind of landed on what we wanted to see when we made the proposal to the school board with our initial resolution and our discussions with the school board the months and months that occurred prior to our resolution. So last year, we were told again and again by some of the very vocal residents to just give the money to the school board and let the experts make the decisions on what's needed. So we now know that the additional funds needed to build Ailer will only need to be $3.2 million, and that we can also get an additional 17% increase in the capacity. This means that simply by waiting until we had real hard numbers from the school board's architects, that we were able to build a great school with a higher capacity for $4.3 million less than what was requested last year. This board's decision last year to not appropriate the $7.5 million, a decision that was derided by many, turned out to be the right decision and resulted in significant savings to the taxpayer to the tune of about $4.3 million. That said, I'd like to see this board work with the school board to come up with a better approach to the appropriations process when planning for the construction of new schools to ensure that we are wisely spending the taxpayers' money, as is evidenced by the data that we have today. All that aside, this resolution would appear to be somewhat of a no-brainer to me. By making the additional appropriation, we get a school with a capacity of 17% higher than expected enrollment at a total per pupil cost savings of approximately $10,000 per student, and the square feet per student comes in at 140 square feet, which is what this board proposed last year. So I'll give credit to the school board and their architect for bringing us a plan that actually makes sense and gets us to where we want it to be in the first place, albeit a roundabout way and a long time getting there. Therefore, as frustrating as the process has been, I will vote in favor of this proposal as I think it's the fiscally responsible thing to do at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion, anyone? All right. So the motion is to approve the appropriation. Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, and the money is approved. That will bring us to a request to Parks and Recs. Welcome, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, all supervisors? My name is John Turkell. I'm the Assistant Director of the Parks and Recreation Department, and the Parks Recreation Commission is interested in installing a trail around the Bowman Library Lake, as presented on the screen. Doing so would address park needs identified in the county comprehensive plan, the capital improvements plan, under neighborhood parks. Toward the end of the concept development and public input process, the Department of Conservation and Recreation released the Recreation Trails Program Grant application cycle for 2019. This project is eligible to apply for the 80-20 grant, the 80%-20% grant opportunity. However, with the meeting schedules, Parks and Recreation is taking this item directly to the board of supervisors rather than through the finance committee, as would be typical. The application deadline is August 2nd. Parks and Recreation is prepared to submit the grant application. We're before you tonight to request, a twofold request. One would be the authorization to apply for the grant, and two would be a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $157,500 contingent upon grant award. The supplemental appropriation, the match of $31,500, the Parks and Recreation Commission is requesting come from the Parks and Recreation Puffer Fund, and the remainder would be reimbursed as the project progresses. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, anyone? Don't see any, sir.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
One question.
Supervisor Trout?
The citizens that did come to the public hearing, was the feedback positive for the project, or?
Universally, all of the feedback was positive.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So how would the board like to handle this request?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve applying for the RTP grant and the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $157,500, of which $31,500 is to be Parks and Recreation Puffer Funds.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone? All right, Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, that will bring us to committee business, Human Resources Committee. Item A is...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Supervisor Dunn?
So we have three resolutions before you. The first one is that the old Dominion Courthouse service supervised by the Northwestern Regional Jail requests they add a case officer, change fork to the salary administration plan. The committee recommended this unanimously, and I would so move.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Request is approved. Second.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Resources Committee made recommended changes to the Frederick County Human Resources policy regarding administrative leave in unsafe conditions. The committee recommended approval of those changes, and I would so move. The approval was unanimous.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor, yes?
The Human Resources Department also presented recommended changes to the Human Resources policy regarding anti-discrimination and anti-harassment. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move. Again, it was unanimous.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is approved.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Please report. Thank you, sir. That will bring us to item 9B, the Public Works Committee Report. Supervisor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a supplement to the report that's in the consent agenda documentation, I've received a written report updating the recycling situation that came from our Public Works Department. I'd like to read that into the record, if I may.
Please.
Frederick County is currently in the final stages of negotiating a revised contract with our vendor. The contract has been dropped off with the vendor for signature. When finalized, the vendor will continue to take materials through December of 2019. A fee would be charged for cardboard and mixed paper. The vendor will take our metal cans with no fee. We will lose our rebate for all recyclables, and they will not take any plastics. Based on financial analysis, the county could absorb the processing fees and loss of rebates until December and not need any additional funding except to manage the plastics. Several options for plastic are currently being explored. We will continue to see what happens over the next couple of weeks. The Frederick County Regional Landfill is beginning a study to look at local recycling options that may be available for their landfill service area. The study will look at benefits, challenges, and associated costs of various short-term and long-term options for managing recyclables for Frederick County, the city of Winchester, and Clark County. SCS engineers will be performing the study. We anticipate having the study complete by the end of September 2019. Also, the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission is going to perform a study to look at regional options for recycling to include all localities in the NSVRC area. We hope to begin that study by the end of July. The study will probably take 12 weeks. It's anticipated that SCS engineers will also perform the larger regional study. An invitation for bid was posted Monday for a new recycling vendor. We will have some interest, we have had some interest already, and bids are due by July 18th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Very encouraging. Well done. All right, that will bring us to the public hearings, outdoor festival permit request of Robert Bauserman. Thank you, sir.
This is a festival permit. The individual has held this event a couple of times in the past at the county fairgrounds. The proposal this year is to move it to a new location off Route 522, adjacent to Sider Works. The dates of the event are Saturday, September 28th, from 9:00 to 5:00. And as you can see, the applicant is here to address the questions and may have some comments.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have no...
Questions of Mr. Tierney, anyone? Questions of Mr. Bauserman, anyone? Supervisor Wells?
The festival you're having is the same as the festivals you've had in the past.
Yes, sir. Just, of course, basically, it's all it is.
Okay, all right.
Other questions of Mr. Bauserman, anyone? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Is this a public hearing? Would anyone like to speak concerning this proposed festival permit? Anyone at all? Anyone? Last call. We'll close the public hearing portion. I think this is relocated to Gainesboro.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the outdoor festival permit request of Robert Bauserman.
Motion to approve is requested. Is there a second?
Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Festival permit is approved. That will bring us to an outdoor festival permit of Concern Hotline, the 20th Annual Friday Fish Fry. Mr. Tierney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is an annual event. It's been held at the site of Groves Harley-Davidson for a number of years now with no incident. The proposed date is Friday, September 6th, from 4:00 to 9:00. And I know there's someone here from Concern Hotline to address any questions.
Questions of Mr. Tierney, anyone? Questions of Concern Hotline, folks? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, y'all. Have a nice evening.
So how would the board like to handle this one, Shawnee?
Public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, public hearing. Yes, is there anyone who would like to speak concerning this proposed outdoor festival permit for this very, very successful fundraiser for our community? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Shawnee?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve outdoor festival permit request of Concern Hotline for the 20th Annual Friday Fish Fry.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries, and the permit is approved. That will bring us to a public hearing. Conveyance of a quitclaim deed. Mr. Tierney? Mr. Williams?
Mr. Williams, handle this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request from a citizen for a deed for a lot in Shawnee land that everybody thought existed, but in fact, going back to a lot of the unclear deeds of dedication and whatnot back in the day when Shawnee land was plotted out, the lot was never actually plotted. But the original developer conveyed that lot to an owner. But the original developer conveyed that lot to an owner, and that family held it for some time, and then a couple of years ago, sold it to the current owner. And the taxes were paid through the years because this deed showed up back in 1960, whenever, and the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office needed to create an account for it. But again, technically, it had never been legally subdivided, and it turns out that the land that it sits on is part of what is now the open space in Shawnee land that was, I believe, back in the late 1980s conveyed to the county as part of the sanitary district. So we have a situation where everybody involved appears to have acted in good faith in believing they owned it, in paying the taxes on it, but it's just this bit of a technicality that it was never created. So the owner has requested a conveyance of it. The matter before the Board is to approve conveyance of a quick claim deed of the county's interest. It's a, I believe, a quarter acre area lot adjacent to lots the owner already owns. Conveyance of the deed would be contingent on the owner agreeing to waive any claims for refunds of taxes paid during the time that the lot didn't, had not been properly subdivided. And this, of course, is a public hearing item.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Mr. Williams, anyone? Seeing none. So is a public hearing? Would anyone like to comment concerning this conveyance? Anyone at all? Anyone? Last call. We'll close the public hearing portion. Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board authorize the county attorney to pursue conveying a quick claim deed of interest held by the county in a real property identified as parcel number 49A04-1-K-19 in the Back Creek Magisterial District to Jennifer Larick.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. Williams. I just want to reiterate that the current motion we're voting on includes a provision that both the current owner and all future, all past owners cannot sue the county for back taxes, correct? I mean, your memo, your memo indicated that you might want to include that. That's why I'm asking the question.
The proposed release is only by the current owner. I mean, if the Board wishes to amend it to include that, obviously, I have contact with the current owner. I've never had contact with the previous owners, and I'm not even sure that's possible.
Mr. Williams, do we have the legal authority to amend this to include all previous owners?
That's the Board's discretion, but it may cause the conveyance not to happen.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
I'd like to amend it. I'd like to amend the motion so that it says that not only the current owner, but all previous owners will not have, will not have the authority to come back and sue for past taxes.
Okay, you've heard the amended motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it for point of discussion.
Second for discussion? Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Supervisor Dunn, while I understand the goal that you'd like to reach in limiting liability, I don't see that the county has any leverage or any consideration to offer to other parties. And with the difficulty in trying to track down other people, I think it, as our county attorney mentioned, this may actually kill the deal, and I wouldn't like to see that happen. I'd like to see this move forward, so I will vote against the motion.
Mr. McCarthy.
Supervisor Dunn.
My reason for having this is not to have to track down anybody, just to prevent in the future, somebody proclaim, because our county attorney made the comment that it was a concern, so I'm just trying to address that concern.
Discussion, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is a point of clarification. Once, my understanding of the law is that once a property owner signs the deed and accepts that deed for the consideration, which the consideration would be waiving any claims, there's no claim that a future property owner would be able to make because they haven't paid anything that they would be entitled to receive unless the county attorney disagrees with my legal understanding. I think the future issues would be taken care of with our current motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
No, I was making a comment to Mr. McCarthy. I just said, I said, I was acknowledging his comment.
Further discussion, anyone? All right, so the vote is...
On the amendment.
Yea or nay on the amendment?
Correct.
Are we ready? Supervisor McCarthy.
No.
Supervisor Slaughter.
No.
Supervisor Wells.
No.
Supervisor Lofton.
No.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Trout.
No.
Chair votes no, motion's defeated. That will bring back the original motion, which was to approve, request as presented. Any further discussion? Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right, sir. That brings us to a planning commission public hearing, conditional use permit 0319. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
This is a board. This conditional use permit before you tonight is for a linked landscape contracting business. The property is located at 154 Gainesboro Road, the Gainesboro Magisterial District. It's currently zoned RA, rural areas district. Its current use is an outdoor recreation use that was approved by conditional use permit 4-98. Again, the use before you tonight is for a landscape contracting business. If I could turn your attention to the map, on your left, shows the outline of where this proposed CUP is going to take place. I think most of us have been here in Frederick County knows this is where the pup hut golf is, up on 522 North. Mr. Chairman, this is our proposed use will take place on a three acre parcel of land. The tract of land currently, again, has a conditional use permit for an outdoor recreation facility assigned to it. The location's proposed landscaping contract business will be located within the Gainesboro Rural Community Center, which is identified in the Frederick County Comprehensive Policy Plan. The comprehensive policy plan for this rural community center discourages any large residential development within its community center, but allows for some commercial uses if the uses are in scale and nature of the Gainesboro Community Center. A mix of agricultural, commercial, and residential uses are envisioned for this rural community center. The landscape contracting business in the RA zoning district is permitted with an approved conditional use permit. Majority of the business of this operation will be conducted off-site. This is a small illustrative plan that was put together with the property owner to show, it comes up on the screen, basically what this proposed use is going to use what's already out there in terms of the parking, buffer screening, and landscaping, and signage, and entrances. Should the Board of Supervisors find this use to be appropriate, staff will recommend the following conditions be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, our review agency comments shall be complied with at all times. Number two, an illustrative sketch plan shall be submitted to and approved by Frederick County in all improvements completed prior to establishment of the use, including the screening of the vehicles and equipment. Number three, two non-illuminated freestanding monument signs shall be allowed with this conditional use permit. Signage along 522 shall be 50 square feet in area and 10 feet in height, and the signage along Gainesboro Road shall be 20 square feet in area and 10 feet in height. Basically, Mr. Chairman, that's what happened with the original conditional use permit when it was signed in 1998. Access to this site will only be via the existing Gainesboro Road entrance. And again, that's from the original conditional use permit. They can't come on a 522, obviously, it's a four lane highway. The hours of operation shall be from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. There will be no more than six employees with this unit on-site at any given time. These employees come in to pick up the equipment that's going to be used for off-site and use the parking that's already there. This conditional use permit 0498 shall be void upon approval of this conditional use permit. And number eight, any expansion or change use will require a new conditional use permit. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this application at their June 5th, 2019 meeting. Following a public hearing, staff is seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors on this conditional use permit. For the record, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Benjamin Butler is here representing Mr. Sisk, and he is also here. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you or any of the board members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Mr. Tierney, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything in the conditional use permit or in the current code that would prevent any type of mulch grinding on-site, something that would cause a lot of dust, noise, something to that effect?
There's not a condition assigned to that. I'm going to let the owner and the representative explain what he does, and if you feel as appropriate, Mr. McCarthy, or the board does, we can add that condition.
Other questions of Mr. Tierney, anyone? Supervisor Slaughter.
Are there restrooms at the facility?
Yes, ma'am, there are.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Mr. Butler, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. It's been some time. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ben Butler, and I represent Art Sisk, who's made this application. I think that Mr. Tierney has expressed the conditions that the Planning Commission had discussed down below and which Mr. Sisk is agreeable to do. If you all have any questions for myself or Mr. Sisk, we'll be glad to answer them.
Thanks. Supervisor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Butler, is, would your client be amenable to having an additional condition which would prevent or restrict that there could be no on-site mulch grinding at this location?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think that was raised at the Planning Commission, and we did agree to that. No chipping.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Questions of Mr. Butler? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed CUP? Anyone? Anyone at all? Last call. We'll close the public hearing. Gainesboro.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I would move for approval of the conditional use permit with the inclusion of a condition that no on-site chipping or grinding of materials be allowed on this property.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, and CUP as amended is approved. Thank you, sir. Planning Commission business, other, are there, or is there any? Apparently not. Or liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments. This is the portion of the meeting set aside for citizen comments on any issue. Anyone at all? Yes, sir. If you could have your name, Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, sir. Welcome.
My name's Carol Halls. I'm not from Frederick County. I'm not from Frederick County. I'm from Warren County, involved in the partial dispute between Warren County and Frederick County. I would just like to address Mr. Lofton and the others that had concern about that. Well, the properties, most of the properties that was that included was all family owned. It was my family owned it. It was deeded in 1941 by my grandfather. My cousin was here, my brother, he had to work tonight. But regardless, I would just like, you know, for you guys to understand, I understand what you're saying, you know, it's a little bit more revenue for the county. The boundary's been there for however long, 200 years, I think Mr. Lofton said. But we have, the families have ties to Warren County, and all you people I have never met before. I've met Mr. Wells once. And the biggest concern is, we all live and work, my family all works and lives in Warren County. I've had most of my dealings in Warren County. The fire company, 10, is, it was the first to respond when my mother's trailer was on fire, because somebody raised a question about that, which is right down, it was there within five minutes. You know, trash removal services and stuff, we're all familiar with that. You know, we would all have to relearn where we go, where do we do this, where do we do that? And I vote in Warren County. I've lived in Warren County my whole life. I went to Warren County schools. I know most of the people in the council, I know most people in the Board of Supervisors, the school board. I had a wrestling room built in Warren County for the school board and all that. And I just got a lot of family ties to Warren County, and I understand your concerns, but I would like you guys to take that into consideration. You know, it's people involved. You know, it's not just this land is here, it's actually people involved in this. And that's all I really have to say, and like I said, I'm sure there will be others here when the public hearing is, comes around, and I appreciate your time, and thank all of you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any issue whatsoever? Last call. We will close the public comment portion. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
I have a couple of comments. First, I'd like to read a statement from the Frederick County Convention and Tourists. The first newcomer welcome and information event will be held tomorrow, July 11th, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 at the Visitor Center located at 1400 South Pleasant Valley Road in Winchester. This free, family-friendly event for new city and county residents of all ages aims to provide useful information at a low-key setting with some great local food. The Shenandoah Valley Discovery Museum and Hanley Regional Library will be on hand with children's activities and information on the programs that offer, that they offer. Local residents, including Bonnie Blue, Southern Market Brewery, and Sweet Nola's will offer complimentary food. County staff from EDA, Human Resources, Parks and Rec, and County Administration will be on hand to answer questions and welcome people to our community. If you're new to the community, please come. It will be a good event.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that in August, Frederick County Fair will be held again, and we have a lot of our youth that participate as FFA members. And if you're knowledgeable with the FFA, they've done very well in Frederick County, winning a lot of awards. They're very prominent in our schools. So I encourage you to go out on the dates that we have the Frederick County Fair, support our agribusinesses and our farmers and our youth FFA members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. It's actually the 29th through the 3rd.
It is.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
I have one other comment. This has been an interesting month, and we're all discussing public policy issues. So I just want to correct for the record some things I've heard. And one is that on public schools, I have never been in favor of using trailers as a permanent solution for classrooms. Information that says that is actually incorrect. Second item is, we've come through a budget process in which the superintendent of schools makes a proposed budget, and then he makes adjustments, and then we pass a budget. And I heard comments that we, the board, had cut the budget. That's an incorrect statement. We had cut a proposed budget, we had not cut a budget. We'd actually added about $7 million. For those people that said that my information was inaccurate and a purveyor of misinformation, I would simply point out that my information came from the school board. The fact of the matter is that Frederick County school teachers, according to the school board numbers, are higher than those within an adjacent 30 mile radius, and they are higher than the adjacent counties. They are not as high as Loudoun County, but our ability to pay is a lot less than Loudoun County. So when we talk about public policy, it's good to have accurate information. And one comment that was made was that the school population had increased by 500. Actually, it increased by 600. And so when you put that into the mix, I think that's a positive to the discussion. The more information you can have, we can have a back and forth discussion on that. But I just think that it's appropriate to have good information and treat everyone fairly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Supervisor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Despite my most recent vote in favor of a conditional use permit, I'm on the record as not a big fan of our current ordinance with regard to the CUPs. I'd like to make a motion tonight to ask our staff and county attorney to take another look at our current ordinance and see if we can narrow the parameters for it, because at this point, it seems to me that our rezoning ordinance and our CUP ordinance are almost identical as far as what is allowed under them. And it seems to me that there's a little bit of an abusive process, and that people are going the CUP route in order to avoid rezonings, which may be more appropriate in a lot of the cases that are coming before us. So I would like to make a motion that we task staff.
Can I suggest you make a motion to send it to committee? Planning?
Sure. To code an ordinance first, and then to planning, or to planning?
No, planning first.
Okay, I would amend.
My suggestion, now I'm not trying to change your mind.
I'll amend my motion to refer this to the planning commission for review of the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no.
One more item, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As part of some recent discussions, I've brought up my desire that we have more input